Reach everyone on the call. Um, yeah. Let's be, let's be courteous in our interactions. We won't end up every evening. So good evening, everyone. Hallelujah, okay. It's good evening, I said.
Good evening, everyone.
Hey, that's the spirit. Thank you. Good evening to you too. Good evening to you too. Good evening, um. Cause I'm not going to assume that, you know, everybody that is here, you are on a train and, you know, you cannot talk or you cannot type. So I really love to hear, um, or read your good evenings. So good evening, good evening, everyone. How are you doing today? How was your day been? If you are not in Nigeria, you know, um, and with. The person that's on this call that is not in Nigeria is in the same time as us, I guess, so one hour behind. Anyway, I think it's good evening to everyone, so. Uh, yeah, good evening. How are you doing today? Good evening, Jemima. It's good to see you on the call. Um. Yeah, it's good to see you on the call.
Good evening, Mayo.
Good evening to Milene. Good evening.
Good evening, Gomo. Chis in Wala, good evening, Kuda. Good evening, Kogana Tang, good evening, Jemima.
Eh, hey, uh, by, um, what do they still call those people? Omoluabi. Good evening, good evening to Milene. The rest of you, you don't want to, you want to keep your good evening, Abi. Thank you. Okay. Um, just so that we can make up for the time that my network wanted to steal from us. I want us to pray, I want us to pray before we start to, before we continue, you know, both been learning from last week, I want us to pray. Uh, because it is not enough that we have come to gather, it is not enough that we have, you know, decided to sacrifice. Um, a couple of minutes from our time, from our already busy time, I'd be busy schedule rather. Um, to gather and learn the Bible. I don't think it is something to take lightly, um, and I don't think it would be fair to us that you are nine now. To have made that sacrifice and it will count for nothing. So I want us to just pray and begin to dedicate our, our hearts, our concentration, uh, space, you know. Our minds to the Lord, if you can come off mute, that would be very good, you know. Um, and just pray, and just pray for the next couple of minutes, I want us to just. Ask that the Lord will open our hearts to his word, he will reveal himself to us. We know that when we, you know, study the scripture, Jesus is revealed. And, um, just he's revealed to us, you know, Jesus is revealed to us and there is enlightenment that comes from that space. So let's just begin to pray, please begin to pray, let's begin to pray. That the Lord will reveal, that the Holy Spirit will reveal Jesus to us, you know, the. Um, interesting thing about, about the person of Jesus, the Jesus that has. Ascended to heaven is that you cannot know him except by revelation. You know, the Jesus that was on earth is not the same version of Jesus that is in heaven. And if truly scriptures, you know, um, uh, portray Christ, if truly the scriptures portrayed the resurrected Jesus. Then we need the Holy Spirit, we need the promised comforter, we need the promised teacher. To reveal that Christ to us, else we'll be reading letters. Um, so let's just pray, let's just pray, let's just pray. I want to believe that you're praying, you know, where you are. Um, that the Lord, that, that the Holy Spirit will reveal Christ to you. That the Holy Spirit will reveal Christ to you, that he will be made, um. How did Paul put it again, you know, the, the person, the being that was in history has been made. You know, on the, we now understand him because of the Holy Spirit. Um, uh, just begin to consecrate your space, you know, your heart, your mind right now. By mind, I mean your mental space, you know. Um, if there are anything, there are any things, and by things, I'm counting, jollof rice, you know, dinner. This next snack that you're about to munch, uh, even traffic if you are on the road. Um, the coattails are supposed to submit at work, you know, those, those interesting, true, valid, but. Not necessarily at this moment, you know, things. Um, I want you to begin to just turn them over to the Lord and just say, Lord, I'm here for you. Open my heart to see you, open my heart to understand you, open my heart to receive your word, open my heart to receive your truth. Uh, even beyond the things that whoever is speaking will, will say, you know, open my heart to see you, open my heart to see you. Open my heart to see you. Open my heart to see you in the name of Jesus. Holy Spirit, you are the spirit of truth. We ask that in this moment, oh God, your truth is exalted in our hearts. Come and teach us as Jesus has promised, in the name of the Lord Jesus. Open to us all, God, open to our hearts, to our spirits, the truth that we do not yet know about you, in the name of Jesus. But in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Okay, so good evening again, everyone. It's really, um, amazing to see us on the call. So quick recap, you know, where we were reading last week, if you remember, the first person to tell me, you know, what the focus was. Hmm, by focus, I don't mean the chapter, because everybody knows that by now. Or what the, maybe two things, you know, that were, um. Uh, highlighted from last week's study. The first person knew, not the thing, I'm going to owe you a gift. I don't know if I should put a clause to this gift now, but okay, I fear not. The first person to, you know, what, um. Uh. Two things, two, two highlights from last week's study. Okay, I'm still waiting for us. We continue. Let me see the proof that you were clearly around last week. If you need to go back to your notice, find an appointment test.
Please, God.
Hallelujah, I was just about to call you and put you at this point.
So, um, we are continuing with Psalms chapter one. And we landed up verse one and we move to verse two and three. So, um, yeah, the, the.
Highlight.
Yeah, so the. Should I say the take home for me, um, where some of the words we looked in depth. Into, I think we started with scoff, I think we started with scoff. So talking about mockery, so we talked about. The word that said teachers, so, um, and we stayed a little bit on that. Um, telling us that, um, some of these scoffing and mockery is not just what we thought it used to be. That there are even some teachers, um, of the world, um, that are saying things that are contrary to the will of God. So we, we dwelt a bit on that, then we moved to verse two that talked about his delight is in the love of the Lord. And in his law, he meditated, he meditates day and night. So we talked about the word delight which means pleasure, talk about the word, um, law which means precept, uh, precept and sta- statue. And talked about the word meditate which means to talk about, to speak, to utter and to ponder, so that to meditate does not.
Milene, oh, did they tell you that I'm going to eat luxury somewhere? Why you want to collect all my money?
Collect all the gifts.
But finish, finish, finish.
Okay, so we said to meditate means to also speak, like to, not only ponder, but also speak about it. So and lastly, we talk about the word night, that night does not mean like day and nights, um, like the daytime, it also means time of adversity. So such that in good time and in bad times, we are meditating, we are speaking, we are pondering on God's word. So and we finish with, um, the verse in another verse which says. We are planted in Eden bearing fresh fruits every month, not dropping any leave, always in blossom. I think that was my take home.
Wow, I think you deserve, you know, um, this, this when you're one of those who say, shalate, you have, you have done well. You have done well. Thank you, thank you, Timine. Um, yes, I didn't even think there's any other recap that needs to be done, um, other than that, so thank you, thank you, really, I'm truly grateful. Um, yeah, hold on, I think it's your network, cause I heard him clearly. I think your network wants to join my previous network, please, remove it from, un, unplug it from that line. I think it's your network, cause I heard him clearly. Um, thank you again, Timine. So yes, um, I said I was hoping that we'll finish, you know, the chapter one today, even though I do not want to rush. Because sometimes the reason why we do not, um, get understanding from the word of God is because we study in a rush. Or maybe we read in a rush, not even study, sometimes we don't even study, we just read, you know. Oh, the last chapter that I know was making to me, that I would just memorize and that's it. Memorization, I hope that's the word, is good. It's very helpful, it's very important, but it doesn't take the place of studying and understanding. You know, um, if you don't give yourself to study, the Holy Spirit will really have nothing to, to expand in your mind. Um, so that's one of the reasons why we are calling this. This gathering every now and then, it's not because I want to steal all our testimonies of your time. But because it is essential that if we must birth the newness that we have entered into. You know, we, we have to know God's word, we cannot go and be shouting, and we take mountains and valleys for the Lord, we don't know what the Lord says, you know. Don't, don't, don't be that person that you never be. Emoing to be saying, kilo sheli, come and sit at somewhere, you know. Um, and one of the things that we learned last week that Timine mentioned. That is really, 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 really interesting for us to remember. Like, if, 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 if there's something for you to always keep at the back of your mind, even at the front of your mind. You know, it should be that, even in the time of adversity, the Bible encourages you and I to keep meditating on the word. Whatever that means, whatever the adversity means, whatever the, uh, night season represents, even in that time. Even in that time, so it is not just, it is not just a get rich quick scheme, you know, it is a lifestyle, it is a culture. Uh, so yeah, so blessed is the man, I'm, I'm reading again from verse one, just to brush up our. Memorization of the word, blessed is the man that walking not in the counsel of the angodhi. Standing in the way of sinners, seated in a seat of the scornful, um, and be translated into happy. How happy, you know, is the man that does not pattern his life after the plans and purposes of the wicked people. Or, you know, gets himself married. To, um, the way, to the manner, to the, um, culture of the sinners, of the angodhi. Or, you know, um, gets joined or, or is found, you know, on the seat. Um, of the scornful, of the, of the, um, what do we even call scornful people now? Um, mokas, you know, mokas, mokas teachers. Uh, but his pleasure, you know, is in the law of the Lord, in the scriptures. And in that scripture, as we are doing right now, he meditates day and night. You know, day, when everything is going on well, when there is light, when you don't need to touch. At night, where it's like it's dark and you are alone and you don't know what's going on, you don't even know if God sends you anymore. Uh, yeah, that night too. Um, and, you know, in this scripture, he meditates day and night. And vastly, and he shall be like a tree planted by the rivers of water, you know, that bring forth his fruit in a season. And his leaves shall not wither, and whatsoever he doeth shall prosper. So who wants to read, um, Strong's definition for us? Um, today? I really want to pick Timine, but my mind is saying, ah, give somebody else a chance now, come on. So who wants to read Strong's definition for us today? If you have a strong, you should have the Strong's Bible by now, I mean. Yeah, so who wants to read Strong's definition for us today as we quickly journey? Yay, hello, Chidima. I, I feel like we already have class captains. And I like it. Um, okay, so Chidima, you read Strong's definition, I think, um, Timine can, I'm sorry, you can't escape it, my darling. You will read, um, the NKGV of verse three. So please keep your Bibles open, keep your Bible versions as in, Chidima, you're reading Strong, so keep your Strong version open, so that we can be quick with. Uh, the readings and going through the study itself. So we're reading vastly, Timine, you're reading NKGV verse three, then we'll take it bit by bit and break it down with the Strong's dictionary. So, Timine. Um, over to you.
Sorry, I need to get my NKGV. I had my Strong open, so.
Oh, look at you. Look at you being prepared for your. Okay, so you, you, you will read verse four, I just want us to quickly, um, move with the time, you read verse four, let me read verse three. So that Chidima can, um, break it down for us. Okay, so it says, and he shall be like a tree. Now, if you are, if your Strong Bible is open, you see that. Um, the, the word tree there is highlighted. So Chidima, what does it say? Um, can you hear me? Oh, so we need you to be able to come off mute actually. Oh, oh, sorry, sorry. Okay, Timine, I think you're back. You're back on. Danny, are you able to come off mute?
Yeah, I'm still on the road now.
Okay, okay, please let us know when you get them, so that we can hand them back over to you. But yeah, okay, so I will just, I'll just read, I'll just read, um, and wait for, um, Chidima. Um, maybe to, to read verse four. Timine, you've written the NKGV verse four. Okay, Chidima, you're ready. All right, so what does tree mean?
A primitive root, properly fasting, properly to fasten. To close, shut eyes.
Sorry, tree? That's H six zero eight six.
Yes. Sorry. Yes.
Um, read it again, sorry.
A primitive root. Properly to fasten or make firm.
No, I think you're reading, um, no. No. Tree, so, so, eh, H six zero eight six.
Yes.
She read planted.
Eh, hey, I know that.
A tree from.
Yeah. Yes, yes, we are reading.
A tree.
Um.
From its firmness hence good. Sure, I hope I'm getting that right.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Plurasticus, capellus, helpline, plank. Wood, zippa.
Okay, okay, so we can see that, you know, the tree, the context that was used here.
Sorry, am I getting that right?
Yes, you, you got it correctly, you got it correctly. The tree in context that was used here is the physical tree that you can see. And that's why that verse says, he shall be like a tree. So the verse is telling me to picture a tree, you know, maybe an oak tree, a mahogany tree, a mango tree. I mean, because we eat mango, a mango tree that is planted by the riverside. So this man who does not walk in the counsel of the angodhi, does not, you know, stand with the sinners, sit with the scornful. Um, and meditates, you know, on the scriptures day and night. He shall be like a tree. He shall be like a tree. Now, we picture a tree, um, a, a fruitful tree, you know, a, a tree that bears fruit. Um, cause there are some trees that don't have fruits on them. I think the oak tree does not bear fruits. This is you, this is, it's the wood that is used, even though, because in this case. There is, it's also saying wood, you know, um. Every, every part of the tree that can be used for something makes it fruitful, so I think that counters my initial explanation. But yeah, a tree that bears fruit, um, that is planted by the riverside. So tree here is tree, there is no, there is no wannabe, you know, but. The, the explanation to the tree comes before it, it shall be like a tree, um, planted by the rivers. What does rivers mean?
A real small water. As in irrigation, stream.
Streams, thank you. Um, so a channel of water, you know, we, we, we know river now, the, oh, me. You know. Um, I didn't say planted, because we already read planted, planted means to plant. You know, put something in the soil, cover it and expect it to grow, so plant. So tree is tree, plant is plant, river is river, yeah? Um. Water, my rivers of water, um. Hmm. I'm, I'm trying to see if we need to go into that. Because water, water springs, I'm seeing water springs, so water is water, rivers of water. Uh, plenty, plenty, plenty channels basically. You know, of, of water, I think it's, it's river that flows, yeah? Um, sea doesn't, I'm hoping that is correct, if my geography is still sounding well. But yeah, the streams of water, just think of streams of water, a tree that is planted by, and the tree did not just appear, by the way. The tree, you did not just suddenly see that tree there, you know, it was planted. Meaning somebody did some work to put it into the ground, cover the soil. And make sure that it is by the streams of water, where, you know, there is nutrient for it every day and night. Do you understand? And it's interesting, because the, this, the instruction is forced to meditate day and night. So if you do all of that, literally, eh, you have received the blessings already, you have. Um, nurtured yourself already, I don't know if somebody is getting the, the similarities, you know. Like a tree planted by the streams of water, meaning there is no drought, there is no scarcity, there is no strandedness. Proud of my language, you know, because there is always water. So for the, for the believer who meditates on the word of God day and night, you are not scarce, there is no scarcity of word in you. And because the word of God brings life, there is no scarcity of life in you. Do you get? So it's not even, it's not a tree that appeared by the riverside. It did not just suddenly bloom there, there was a planting that was done. There was a, uh, and we know that to plant means you maybe brought the seed. Or broke the stem somewhere and put it in the soil, so there is a work that is done in the planting, it is not just an appearance. It did not just come suddenly, so that's, that's important to note, as came to my heart. Um, so yeah, this believer is like the tree that is planted, planted by the rivers of water, by the streams of water. That brings for, that bring forth fruit. Now, what does it mean to bring forth?
To bring forth. A primitive ru- root used to make latitude of application.
So meaning there are so many uses for that word, that's your reading out of the report.
Cry, to assign, to average, heal, bestow.
Hmm.
To cause, to charge, to commit, consider, count, there's so many.
Yes, so if you look at all of those meanings, as in, are you seeing that there is so much, there is so much life? And me using life is because I cannot find another, um, um, noun for it. There is so much life that we have, that we have access to. You know, the, the, the fruits that we bring forth, it's not just things that people can eat, friskily. It's not just resources, even though that's part of it, you know, um, it is also healing. You know, it is also to bring something forth, to get, you are not stranded, there's always something that you can give. If somebody comes to you and you give them something, you have brought something forth, you know, there's also that, there is also to deliver. Are you seeing that we can't afford to live less than what God has planned for us? You know, um, there is also to restore, you know, there is to, to, um. I'm, I'm saying to, to withdraw, you know, to withdraw, to yield to God. Are you seeing that even obedience is fruit? Obedience is fruit as much as it works. It is interesting. So this man, the, the fruit rather, that this man brings forth is, is a vast amount of, of, um, um. Items, let me use that word, so to some people you bring healing, to some people you bring deliverance. Some people you bring, um, resources, you know, some, and, and to God. Yielding, yielding to God is fruit. Very interesting, because you think it's the, it's by the mountains that you conquer for the Lord sometimes, but just yielding to him is fruit. You know, um, but it's, again, you can't even know what to obey if you don't know the word of God. You can't know how to pattern your life if you don't know what the cultures, what the, um, kingdom culture is. So it shall be like a tree planted by the rivers of water that brings forth fruit in its season. Sorry, what does, what does fruit mean? Um. Yeah, fruit, what does fruit mean?
Reward.
Reward, thank you, reward, that brings what, so reward comes after you have labored for something. Reward comes after there has, the, whatever there has been work. And the work is that planting and nurturing, you know. Because of the streams of water that this person is planted in, we are, um. There, there is a bringing forth of reward that comes from us at the trees. There is a bringing forth, both to God and to men, you know. Um, yeah, in a season that brings forth fruit in a season, what does season mean?
Time, especially. Now, when always setting continually evening long season.
Like hell, there is no break. There is no break, there is no holiday for fruitfulness in my life. I wish somebody would just say that, you know, to themselves and affirm it. There is no holiday for fruitfulness in my life, I am always fruitful. I am always fruitful, I am always fruitful. Day, night, I am always fruitful. Anytime that you come to me to eat of this tree, there is always food for you. Anytime that God comes to me, you know, to receive his reward, his profit, give, quote unquote. There is always, there is always something for me to give, there is always a reward with me. Uh, there is always food on my tree, I am always fruitful, I take no break from, you know, being fruitful. I take, there's no holiday for my fruitfulness, I don't have downtimes, I don't have down seasons where there is no fruits, I am always fruitful, always fruitful. Always fruitful in and out of season, always fruitful, so continually, um, um, you know, time. Um, um, day, night, you know, season, evening, long due, you know, anyway. Um, that, then his leave, what does leave mean?
His leave as coming up, as coming up on a tree, collectively, branch.
Leaf, so leaf is the away on the tree. I'm sorry if you don't understand my river sometimes, so leaf, leaf on the tree, you know. Picture a huge, um, mango tree, I, I'm using mango, because I've seen mango trees a lot. Um, and just imagine every leaf on that tree, there is no, there is no brown leaf on the mango tree. Everything is green, because why? There is nutrients, there is nothing sick in that, in that tree. You know, sometimes when, when you find a tree and you find maybe some brown leaves on the tree. Um, it can be as a result, maybe sun is too much somewhere, you know, or water is not, or the tree is not getting water properly. Maybe it has not been rained for a while, you know, um, and so some part of the tree or the leaves maybe. And it's understandable, but this scripture is saying that for this believer. Because you are planted in God, we already established last week that God is that streams of water, God is that nutrient itself, he's the one that planted us anyway. Our own job is to stay planted and stay connected to the source, which is God, you know, he planted us in himself. So God has planted us, he's watching us, pick his word, all we have to do is stay connected to the streams of water. Now, because of that affiliation, our leaves cannot wither. You cannot come to this tree and find a brown leaf on it. Because there is so much nutrient that it gets, there's so much light on the inside of it. So around every leaf that you find on it, you know, is brown, it's green rather, probably. It's green. And if you find brown leaves, they're on the floor because of pruning, you know. Um, because if you think of a tree, uh, some, some leaves have to die so that new ones can be brought forth. But if you find any brown leaf on the tree, then there's a problem, there's a nutrient problem. But if you find brown leaves on the floor, it means that, you know, it's shedding so that it can grow more. Do you understand? So sometimes, um, the fact that there are no withering leaves does not mean that we will not have brown leaves that needs to be shed. And that's why I go to the Holy Spirit that is in you, that is working active, that is not dormant or sleeping. Because sometimes you keep the Holy Spirit asleep and just say, you know what, I don't need you right now. I'm just gonna um figure out life for my own. Okay, so let me write it to do, sometimes we do that, you know, um. But if you're engaging the Holy Spirit, you are, you know, living with him, living from him. Sometimes he will tell you, okay, um, I need, I need, I need to start the conversation about what you just said. And then you just know that, okay, I, I mean, it's, I mean, so, yeah, I tend to apologize or I tend to pray, I tend to ask him to help my heart. Or I need to start the conversation about what you just, uh, thought, you know, maybe crazy thoughts just came to your mind. I like, hey. Murai, oh, wow, well done, you know. And by well done, I'm a bit sarcastic with myself. Um, and that is pruning. Or he says, um, you know what, I want you to give me your Mondays. I want to have the whole of your Mondays. Um, yeah, I want us to be having some conversations on those days. There are some things that I want to tell you and hear from you and I need your Mondays. And you're like, ah, ah, who are Monica Tiberius? Sometimes it's pruning, you know, by saying, um. Yeah, this person has offended you, I know, but I want you to go and buy gifts and give to them. And you're like, hmm. Hey, are you playing? You know, sometimes it's pruning, sometimes it's go on a fox. That part, I'm praying for help, you know, it's pruning. Um, sometimes the thing, I know that I have promised you this and I know that you can see it right now, but I'm asking you to wait. Sometimes it's pruning, so I'm intentionally botching that part so that when we think of um getting nutrients and. Uh, leaves not withering, we're not thinking, oh, that must be, I don't, I don't need to have a brown leaf. So, so when your leaves, when your green leaves, when they have spent their time, they are, how do they call it now? Their timeline, when they've existed their timeline, what happens to them? You know, you need to shed so that you can grow. So, yeah, the fa- the father, the husband man, the gardener, which is Holy Spirit in us. Does that a lot. So the, 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 um, what's it called now? The factor that determines whether or not a tree is getting enough nutrient is not, is not whether or not, you know. Whether or not there are, um, brown leaves around on the floor from the. In fact, sometimes the gardener comes and cuts the green ones. I mean, am I wrong? Even the, the green ones sometimes, just so that there can be enough space for the others to grow. I don't know if anybody wants to counter that, if you know, if you, you know, because the last time I read a report, yeah. But yeah, um, the gardener comes and prunes even green ones. So I, I, I really need to botch at that point so that if there's anyone that is undergoing some form of pruning, even though I feel like there is great prunes all day. That's where the death itself comes. But if there's anyone that is undergoing specific, you know, forms of pruning. And you're feeling like, um, this doesn't sound like something that I'm reading. I need you to understand that even that is part of you being nurtured, it's part of you getting nutrients. So, um, stay where you are going from and allow yourself to be prone so that you can grow even much more. Okay, so, um, yes, so season, I think, we, we, we've talked about season here. Um, and it's leaf, so wither, wither, you know, it's this, we're not wither. Um, Chilima, can you hear me?
Sorry?
Wither, wither.
Wither.
To wield, please start on that part.
A primitive root, so wield generally to fall, fail, faint, figuratively to be foolish.
Uh huh. You can see now that sometimes our foolishness is proof that we are not getting enough nutrients. Let's go, let's go. It's fine. You see this, uh, what do they call it? So we, we're all here to collect it. Because it's a pleasure that we collect it from the word of God, then we allow the world, you know, the, the darkness of the world to bring out darkness in us. I mean, that's going to be such a shame. So let's go.
This one, this gray slightly faded. Falling down, coming up, doing foolishly, coming to know, make vow.
Okay, thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. And it's interesting because I remember that, you know, for, um, last week. We spent a lot of time praying about the counsel of the Lord. Um, and, and the opposite of the counsel of the Lord is foolishness. So when we do things that are even sometimes supposedly good or supposedly, um, um, like great ideas. But if it is not the counsel of the Lord, it is foolishness, you know. So to, to know the scriptures and to know how to live according to the scriptures is wisdom. So may the Lord help us repent from our foolishness and submit to his counsel. So yeah, the, the, the word that came to my heart really strongly as you're reading is come to not, to come to nothing as in emptiness. And I, the picture that came to my mind now are the picture of people who supposedly are woke, you know. I don't know if you have the time to speak to people who are not Christians. Or maybe who were Christians at some point in your life, and maybe they got offended by Christians, which almost always happens. Um, and because of that, they, they, they are now in, um, oh, I don't go to church anymore. Or, oh, I don't, I don't, I don't do Christians anymore, um. You know, those, those category of people. And then when they start to talk to you, they say, I know God for myself, you know, I have a relationship with God. Anybody that tells you that they have a relationship with God without mentioning Jesus, you know, without testifying to the lordship of Jesus. To the fellowship of the Holy Spirit. Um, such good things, you know, anybody that, that claims to, to have a relationship with God. And doesn't testify to the lordship of Jesus. And I need to just take my, take the, um, choice of words very, very, very seriously because it's very important. So does not take, does not testify to the lordship of Jesus and to the fellowship of the Holy Spirit is not a child of God. That person has been created by God, you know, is a creation of God, but is not a son of God, something like that. Because it is through salvation that we are adopted into sonship. That's how we become sons of God. Um, that's, you know, the new birth, the new life, and all of those new things. Um, so yeah, anyone who comes to you and says, I have a relationship with God, and they don't acknowledge the lordship of Jesus. Or testify to the fellowship of the Holy Spirit, they are not sons of God. See, whether or not they have all the millions in the world, whether or not they claim to see visions, whether or not they even have supernatural powers. I need you to understand very, you know, clearly that it is not just us Christians that have access to the supernatural. The only difference, or maybe, you know, the only difference, the major difference is that we have the right access, praise God. Is that we have the right access. So if you enter through Jesus, not anything that you find there, just that it is good because we serve it to Father. But if you don't enter through Jesus, oh, well, anything that you, you guys think, I'm thinking like that. But yeah, um, so no matter the supernaturalness or whoever you're talking to, no matter the experience that they've had, no matter the visions, the dreams. Scenes, you know, um, what is this witch in the act of apostles that, that prophesied, you know, um, to Paul? When Paul, before Paul casted the, the bow Jesus out of, out of her. Um, I've forgotten her name. I don't even know if she has a name. But yeah, the, the girl, the soothsayer, what do they call her now? Anyway, if somebody finds that verse, please let me know. You can just post it on the group. But yeah, um, even the devil can access the supernatural. If he cannot actually, he will not be taunting us so much, you know, he will not even have access to us because in the spiritual realm. Everything is, is like the game, we all have cars. Bring out the ace and tell you things to do. Um, but the, the beauty is that we as Christians, we have the right access. We have the right access. Please let me know if you can, if you hear me. Praise God. Is anyone else still hearing me? Okay, great. Okay, great. So we have the right access. Um, yeah, yeah. What, what even brought me to that part, safe? Uh, uh, please remind me. Um. How did I enter, you know, somebody saying, you know, it's the road to church again? This network, I cast them by me. There was something I was saying before then, um, I think I was talking about the, you know, com- coming to not, coming to nothing. You know, um, based on the strong definition that we read and, um. Fruitlessness basically, so when the Lord puts two talents in you and is coming and expecting four. Or even three, you know, as far, I don't sure, not three, I guess. This is meaningful, I, as I go, I buy, they're not giving me change, you know. Um, and then it comes and you're going to pay, I'm just going to bury it to, ah, I know it. You know, or it tells you to do something that you disobey. Um, and you say, I'm afraid, you know, afraid that I don't have the capacity for all God has given me to do. And all those, um, silly things that we tell ourselves just to get out of responsibilities. Um, it is a, it's a, it's a, it's an example of coming to not, coming to nothing. That's what not means. Not, not, not means no emptiness. Yeah, thank you, I remember it. Yeah, um, empty, I was talking about emptiness, you know. Um, how people try to sound woke. And when you, when you, when you descend it down, is emptiness. You know, like, because they avoided that they've not allowed Christ to feel. And so they are finding every other work thing to say just to feel like they know the Lord. But anyone who doesn't know the Lord and doesn't acknowledge the lordship of Jesus does not know the Lord. You know, so, um, yeah, I'm saying that to say that, you know, coming to nothing is also a proof that this person has not been planted. Or has not allowed himself, oneself to be planted by the Lord, um, and in the Lord. So, um, whatever it does, prosper. Let's look at prosper. What does prosper mean? What does prosper mean?
Prosper. To push forward in various senses, literally or figuratively. To break out, come mightily, go over, be good. Be profitable, cost to, cost to effect, make to save pros- prosperity. Um, prosperity, yeah, come mightily.
Yeah, so you can see that it's all things good, all things good. But literally and figuratively, all things good to break out, to, it's not the one that happens on your face when you are, you know. When you're experiencing adulthood, um, but to, to. Come out into a season, into a, um. Ah, Holy Spirit, give me the right words. To, to enter into a place of prosperity, basically. To enter into a place of, I can't use the word that I'm giving you, uses that I really want to use, or avalanche. You know, into a place of, there is just so much. And that's why you hear some people say there is so much on the inside of you. They are not lying, you know, um. Prosperity means bringing those things out, you know, bringing those things out. So breaking out, you know, to come mightily, to, to be good, to, to, um, be profitable. Profit is not just, um, I, I went to the market, I bought something, I bargained, I saved myself two thousand. No, profit is also not just, oh, I bought this item for twenty euro, I'm selling it for fourteen euro, I have twenty euro more, no. Profit is that God has deposited something on the inside of you. And when he comes, he finds that that thing has found expression. So the Lord gave you a gift to be, um, gift of empathy, you know, you can empathize with. People, you can feel people's pain. It is not an opportunity for you to just, you know, spread your emotions all over the place. Even though it's a tool, it is an opportunity for you to intercede for others. One of the reasons why Jesus, Jesus is the greatest intercessor, um. That is compassionate. Compassion is, is a tool for intercession. So if you have the gift of empathy, the Lord expects that you to intercede for his people. You know, so, um, um, profit in that sense does not mean, oh, now I can empathize more. That is not profit. Profit is that, oh, now I can intercede for people more. Or before I was as if for two, three people, but now my capacity has grown and give or take ten people daily, I receive something for them. And that, that's one of the things that I believe that the Lord is doing with us in the community, you know, putting the compassion of people in us so that we can intercede for them. I believe very strongly, and this is a very, this is a prophetic moment, a prophetic word, um, that the Lord is raising in intercessors in our midst. And I'm not saying this to sound, you know, prophetic or to, um, form a word anyway. But there is, there is, there's many tribes who are compassionate about the people of God. And who want to see them become all that God has called them to be. The people who will stay in the place of prayer until God's will is done over every one of the people that God creates in their hearts. So you speak with someone in the community and the person tells you, oh, A, B, C, and D is going on, I end up feeling pity. You are compassionate because you can feel their pain, you can feel their sorrow. And it doesn't just, because sometimes we need to learn, um, um, one of the things that would be. The fit or same life is to learn how to feel your gift. You know, if you, you just be, you would just pity people and say, oh my God, so much. There is so much happening in this world. Ah, you just should just come already. No, he, that's why he has sent you here. So there's a moment for you to say, okay, on your knees, Lord, this person is going through this thing. I'm going to stay here until I receive a word for this person, until I receive a word from you, maybe that I have to tell the person or not. But just to advocate for this person, you know, um, at the throne of mercy. So, um, if you need to, if you, if you, and this is also a word towards, it is a gift that you have noticed on the inside of you. You have the gift of teaching, the gift of, um, um, healing, the gift of hearing. You need to learn how to wield those gifts. As I, when I say learn, like go to the school, I don't just mean, you know, um. Practice, I mean, like learn, like, wh- wh- what has one of us said concerning these gifts? How can I wield them properly to learn? Anyway, that's bad, by the way. But yeah, um, the Lord is raising people who will intercede for other people, people who will not be very, who will not just be selfish with their prayers, who will not just be me, 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 me. Who will stay in the place of prayer until victory is concerning somebody that is not them, you know, or even not even related to them. Um, and if you are the one, whether you're here on this call or you're listening to the replay, I want you to just spend some time after this call and. Just receive it, you know, just receive it. Forget about how you start. It's, it only have to be a thing that everybody else knows about. It is just you and God. That's the beautiful thing about intercession. Nobody needs to know, you know. Um, maybe I said the Lord gives you a word for the person, um, yeah, but just spend some time praying and just receive it. Just spend some time praying and receive it. I believe that the Lord is finding some gifts to, to flame in our spirit. And prophets in this case would mean that he would expect that we express those gifts. By being nonchalant and very hostile leaders or, um. Going to social media saying, I'm a prophet, I can now see, and all those. What he gives to serve you and your people, so what next to do, you know, yeah. So I just needed to, to share that. So I think we're done with verse three. Um, it shall be like a tree planted by the riverside, um, that brings forth its fruit in its season. Leave also shall not wither, whatever it does shall not. Okay, so let's see if we can, um, sum up verse four, five and six. The ungodly are not so, the ungodly are not so. Um, Tim Lane, please read strongs for us. You, you read the strongs for four and five, then Chilima will read the strongs for six. Okay, so the ungodly are not so, but are like the chaff, which the wind dries away. Now, what is ungodly? Who are the ungodly? We've learnt about the godly, we've learnt about the ways of the godly man, we've learnt about the manners of the. Who are the ungodly? We've learnt about the godly, we've learnt about the ways of the godly man, we've learnt about the manners of the godly man. Or, um, the things that he does not do and the things that he does, you know, and the things that he enjoys. So now, the ungodly, the people that's. In, um, this section. If, uh, the counsel of the ungodly, the way of sinners, the seat of the scum, yeah? The godly people do not. Find themselves mixing those things, the ungodly people find themselves mixing those things, now we are ready about the, um, uh, the prosperity of the godly. You know, what is their portion if they do these things? Now, for the ungodly, what happens to them? Who are the ungodly?
So, ungodly.
Tim Lane.
Morally wrong. Concretely and actively bad person, it says the condemned, the guilty, the wicked man that is wrong.
Thank you, you see why it is also interesting, it is also important for us to bring people to the knowledge of Christ? Because people who are outside the Lord, they do bad things, they know that those things are bad. But there is a rebellious spirit in them that just tells them, whatever, you know. Um, in fact, maybe intentionally want to be rebellious so that they would not find Christ. You, I, I don't know how best to explain it, you know, um, but they condemn the guilty. There is therefore now no condemnation to those who are in Christ, but those who are out, not in Christ, there is condemnation for them. And it's until they receive the love of Christ, that, that condemnation is waived, you know, and then there is acceptance and love. And adoption into fellowship, so the ways of people who do not know Christ. You know, are the ways of the ungodly. Condemned people, guilty people, you know, what does chaff mean? So the condemned people are not so, they are like chaff, what does chaff mean?
Um, so chaff means pressed out. Winnowed or rather trashed loose, a chaff.
Hmm. Thank you, so, um. Show of hands, you know, if you, if you have, this is a very funny question, if you've picked beans before, please let me see your hands. If you, you know, have the privilege, or the suffering of picking beans before, let me see your hands. Ah, so all of you, there are rights to this, wow. Wow, for you. So nobody here has picked beans before? My, oh my. Wow, okay. Yeah, I've picked beans before, sure, I'll see you tomorrow. Hey, thank you, ah, thank you, thank you, thank you, um, Tim Lane. Thank you, dummy, ah, and I thought that I'm the only one that's using it in. I'm, 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 no, no, not that, not that, okay, so, um. You know the, what do they call it, equality dotting, I don't know if there's another initial apart from chaff, but those, the, um. Oof, I know there's a proper word for it, but I cannot find it because we did not get to use it, but you know the stuff that you throw away after you finish picking the beans? Hmm? Actually, if you buy beans from the market, and maybe God now, if you, you'd not buy, you went to buy drunk. You know, the ones that is not small, and that's selling, the ones that maybe is valuable, people that are selling that thing. They really couldn't be bothered about picking it, repicking for you, and when you get home and you want to pick it. What you do first is pour in a tray, yeah, and then you blow it, you, um, rather, um, throw it up, you know, in a. In a chef-ish way, in the tree, and then you blow the chaff away. I don't know, if you, if you can relate, please just let me see your hands. If you can relate with that experience, where you buy beans, pour it in a tray, you know, throw it up. As if it was a juggle balls, and then you blow the chaff away, if you can relate to that experience, let me just see your hands. Thank you, thank you, yes, okay, so, um. One scripture is saying is that the ungodly people, hmm? They are like, they are not the bees who, the shaft, don't go, don't go, that's them. They are the ones that, any small thing like this, eh, if you throw that tree up, and the bees lands back. You see that shaft is going out of the tree, with the wind, with the wind, with the wind. And so when, when scripture says, you know, don't be trusty and fro by every sound of doctrine. The ungodly, sometimes the ungodly, they go, they go to church. Yes, sometimes they go to church, you know, and then they just hear this prophet, and they hear that pastor, and they hear this apostle, and they are just running around with it. You know, today they are the, um, they are the light of the world. Tomorrow, they are the, and, and, and I'm, and I'm saying this very carefully, because. Inasmuch as those things are true about believers, there is just a, um, mindset. That comes with people who are trusty and fro, you can almost tell every time you have conversations with them, every time you see their, um. Content, you know, and then tomorrow is, um, um, taking nations. Not that, you know, the Lord has not sent you to take nations, sometimes the nation that you're sending to go and take is the members of your body. Sometimes you need to have these conversations with ourselves, you know, sometimes the wars, partition that the Lord is telling you to break is within your mind. So sometimes we've not conquered, we've not conquered the enemy within, we are good outside, I'm saying, I want to take, you know, Pakistan. Sorry, Pakistan came to my mind, because I was having a conversation with my friend earlier, and. Quote-unquote gossiping, it wasn't gossip, I was just mentioning that, you know, Apostle Michael Roco went to Pakistan to, you know. Do the work of ministry, and I was just really awe inspired, that's why Pakistan came to my mind, but yeah, you know, I'm, I'm, and you hear that actually, and like I said. The next place is, you know, um, Venezuela. And the Lord is saying, hello mommy, you have not, you have still not conquered the enemy within. You know, you have, I, I've asked you to sit with me, and just spend time with me, but no. The next conference, the next meeting, I just want to go there, I am not going there because, you know. Um, you feel like you would hear a word from the Lord and just grow in your fellowship with him, you're going there because you want to go and receive impartitions and activations. Those things are not wrong in themselves, please don't get me wrong, those things are not, um, 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 bad. But if the motive of your mind, if the motive behind you running to and fro is just so that you can catch the next thing that is going on, then you are like the ungodly. Because everything that everybody's saying now, you are going there. Some people cannot even explain why, you know, what it means to be saved by grace, or what it means to be saved, um, um, without works, you know. Actually, that's a, that's a big conversation for another day, but you just hear that somebody said, um. Your works are not needed, and then you go, perhaps even if you do anything, you will see enter, you see make heaven. You know, it just tells that you have not actually studied, you work the Bible, you've just studied the Word of God. Somebody says, um, you can, you can, um, I mean, like, there, there are just a lot of nonsense that are flying out there. And then you, or, or you are contending for power so much that you forget to work in love. And the Lord is saying, I've not sent you on this work, go, come back and come and sit with me. But no, it is where those manifestations are, where those shows are, that's where you want to be. That's like, the chaff, everywhere that the wind goes, the chaff goes. You carry the tree and swing it up while you bring it down, it, everything that is not. Strong enough to be beans, in fact, it's better to be stones, you know, than to be sharp, because stones will not get thrown away, John has found, but I digress. But yeah, um, that's really, chaff is, just, when you think of it, just think of people, just think of the dirty beings that the wind can carry away. Amen, amen. Okay, so, uh, which the wind, um, you know, by resemblance, breath, sorry that I'm reading it, I really want us to. Round up this, this two, next two verses, um, breath. Or even violent exhalation, that's to exhale, um, figuratively, anger. Unsubstantially, by extension of the region of the sky, you know, by resemblance, spirit, meaning that it is not just, um, um. Occurrences that carry the people to and fro. It is the lack of spirits, to see me, to see me, to see me, to see me, you know, today you are for the Lord, tomorrow is like, let's take a break. You know, there's a spirit of, of being trusty and fro, um. And that's why sometimes we still have to cast out devils from people who are going to church. But again, that's by the way, um. Where was I? Um, but only irrational being, you know, including his expression and functions. Air, anger, blast, breath, um, cool, courage, mind, quarters, spirit, again, wind, you know, just think of the wind, wind is wind. Um, which the wind drive it away, to drive away is the same thing as, um. I think we've read this before, Nadaf, sorry, hold on, um. Hmm. I think we've read this winning before, this drive it away before, sorry, it just looks very familiar. Anyway, um, to drive away to and fro, you know, trust down, shaking, trust to and fro, basically. Um, that's what it means to be, to be driven away. So, fine, so summary of number four, of verse four, the ungodly are not like the godly, there's a distinction between them. The ungodly are like the dirty of beings, the fellow-fellow ones that can, you know. That can go away, in fact, it's interesting, because it could have been stones. Because the stones don't get thrown away, so sometimes it's better to be evil properly, and that's why people said, if you are lukewarm, I will spit you out of my mouth. Because you cannot be doing the leaderly with me. You know, you cannot be here and there, here and there, here and there, serve me and serve me properly, don't, don't, don't be everywhere, don't, don't. Don't be fuming and with the Lord today, and tomorrow, you are with the people who are not with the Lord. You know. So if you want to be evil, be evil, literally, that's what the verse is saying, if you want to be a wicked person properly, the wicked, don't be like the ungodly. Do you understand? And interesting, because there are people that are. Godly, but are not godly, I hope I've not confused you. There is a God of this world, the God of this world is not ungodly, there is a God, you know, that is of this world. Because some people, they are wicked, they are, they are, they are on the other side, and they are standing by it properly, those ones are easy to save. Honestly, and people who are always everywhere, you know, today you are in the church. Tomorrow you are on the internet arguing over which secular artist has more money. Hmm, we'll go there. We'll go there. Today you are in church, listening, tomorrow you are on the internet, arguing over which pastor is better than which pastor. We'll go there, we'll go there, so that our foolishness can be exposed to us through the scriptures and we can be wise. Today, you are in church, listening to the Word of God, tomorrow you are, you know. Using the evil slangs of the world. Don't be like the ungodly. You have God on the inside of you. Live, live his life. And I'm not just talking to one person, I'm talking to myself too, you know, live his life. Stand with the Lord firmly, don't, don't be here and there. Let it be evident that this one is for the Lord, there's no, there's no wondering. Whether or not you are maximalist or minimalist in your dressing. And I intentionally use those words, I didn't say decent or indecent, you know, indecent rather. Whether you are the, you know, going all the way out, what's on, give and, give and take, give, what, give them finish. Or you are the, I'm just going to be, you know, very, um, reserved in my choice of clothes, and I don't wear wigs, I don't wear earrings, that's beautiful. But indeed, doing all of that, let it be clear to the world that you belong to the Lord, that's what this means. Let it be clear to the world that you belong to the Lord, don't be like the ungodly. Let's your conversations on outside the forewards of the church, let it not be unchurchi. Carry the, carry the godliness of God everywhere you go. Let the ungodly see you and know that you are not part of them. Of course, the wicked people know, and that's interesting part, the wicked people, they know. And by wicked, I mean people who are not serving Jesus, like, there and there, plainly, they know, they know when you are not part of them, they already know, now, now you don't know. But don't let the ungodly, people who are trusty and fro, don't let them think you're part of them, because you shouldn't be. Don't be found in the midst of, you know. Scuffers. Don't be found on the way of sinners. Don't be found in the midst of people who mock the thing, the sacred things of God. Comedy is going on out there, they're using the Bible or the church or the choir too, even if it's somebody that you respect so much, don't be found laughing unnecessarily, you know. Let your angels not give you one knock and say, is that the person that you go in your stupid business and God be calling you, yah, 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 and they are. Making jokes about you, yah, yah, and you are there, you are shining. Sometimes these things need to be said. And so, hey, it's just comedy, it's not serious, ah, wow. The things that, that, that bring you to the presence of the Lord, somebody usually to make jokes to, for no reason, and you think it's okay to just be laughing. Even you, the laugher, and the person that created the content, you are in the same group, ungodly. And sometimes because we respect and admire these people, and would not learn to, you know, separate people from, from their actions, sometimes. We'll just say, I mean, if a person can do it, no, it's just, it's just fools now, it's just fools, it is not just fools. Because your age, that's why sometimes they are always just looking at us like, hey, God, the people that you came to there for. Look at us in our glory and element, and, you know, we can't even, we can't even bear your image. And then there's this person that has received the life of God, and is just there, the things that are sacred. People are, ungodly people are usually to laugh, and you are just there joining them to be ungodly, you know. It is well, may the Lord give us wisdom, in Jesus's name. May they don't give us wisdom in Jesus's name, oh. Amen. So number five, and verse five, I keep saying number, verse five, um. Therefore, the ungodly shall not stand in the day of judgment, nor sinners in the congregation of the righteous. You see, there is a special breed, there's a, there's a formation, there is a specificity, you know, of these happy people. It, there's a distinction, you cannot miss it. You cannot miss it, to the trend, I have an ears, you cannot miss it. You cannot miss it, and this would also help us to not choose ungodly people as spouses, you know, because you will descend. You will descend, you will descend, and this goes beyond just praying, you know, for the future of the person you want to marry, or the person you are currently in a relationship with. It goes beyond that. There is that in the works, but it goes beyond that, you know. There is a distinction, so there is the, um, 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 what's it called? And the judgment for us believers, eh, is a term of reward. I hope you know that judgment does not mean, judgment does not mean, um, um. Vengeance alone, when there is, when, when you judge something, it's like you are weighing something, okay, let's, let's go to the scriptures, um. Yeah, judgment, let me just read it, it says, um. A verdict, you know, so it's like, it's like a case being brought to a judge. And he's saying, okay, this is what I think about it, this is what I, this is my final decision on this case, so. Exactly, favorable or unfavorable, so judgment for us as believers is not a day of crying. It's a day of reward, it's a day, it's a day that we look forward to. Because we know that the judge is our God, we know that we have served this judge, so when we bring our life, ask cases to him, it's a day to be rewarded. I hope, I hope, you know, our hearts are here, it's a day to be rewarded. So properly a verdict, favorable or unfavorable, pronounced traditionally, especially a sentence of formal decree, human or particularly divine. Um, law, individual or collectively, including the fact, the place, the suit, the crime, the penalty, abstractly justice, including a particular. The place, the suit, the crime, the penalty, abstractly justice, including a particular right or privilege. Anyway, the point is, um, excuse me, judgment is reward for us. But for the sinners, for the ungodly, they cannot stand, because that judgment is, is destruction for them. It's destruction for them. It's destruction for them, you know, um, nor sinners in the congregation. Um, we're reading what sinners is, in the congregation, you know, assembly, um, crowd, in the company. So sinners cannot stand in the company of the righteous, righteous means, um. Just, a, a, you know, a, a lovefully just man, somebody who is, who has truth in him. Somebody who has truth in, in him. The righteous, the ungodly rather, cannot stand in the congregation of the righteous, the sinners cannot stand in the congregation of the righteous. This is interesting that there is a reward for us following Christ, there's a reward for us living our lives, um, after. After the, the culture of the kingdom, it's a distinct, it's a distinction rather. And verse six, sorry, I said that, I know, I know I said Jim, I will take it, but I really wanna surround up again, um, and, you know, share as well. Um, so for the Lord know it, Lord here, um, is Jehovah, you know, he knows he can testify, actually. I think that's what it means, um, properly to ascertain by seeing, so the Lord sees, of course, we know that the Lord sees. And he knows, so there is a testimony of the Lord. In case you don't know, sometimes, not sometimes, every time that the Lord judges us, um, in our day to day interactions with him. He has a testimony over us. And the interesting and maybe unfair parts in a way, or on. Hmm, yeah, maybe unfair is the word, you know, parts that. Sometimes, most times, the testimon, no, all the time, sorry, all the time, the testimony of the Lord over us eh. As godly people, and I, I want us to listen very carefully and not, you know, misunderstand my words. The testimony of the Lord over us is not based on our actions. Our actions matter and they carry weight, even our thoughts carry weight, you know, in the presence of the Lord. But his testimony over us is not usually our actions, because he knows that. From the time that, you know, he ate the fruit, AKA the apple. And man fail, there is a level of frailty that has come with our nature, that we have to daily crucify. Now, the actions of man is not what determines the testimony of the Lord. What determines his testimony is the spirit, the state of the spirit of a man, the state of the heart of a man. Um. I really wish that we could quickly read this, but as at the time that the Lord, you know, um, testified concerning Abraham. For I know Abraham, you know, my servant, that he will command his household after me. He knew that he was going to sin and I, I, I really hope I'm getting this timeline correctly, I feel like he had already even maybe connected with his wife to, you know. Have Ishmael, but the testimony of the Lord over Abraham was not based on his flaws. And, you know, foolish decisions. But based on the state of Abraham's heart, and I know that, you know, to the, to the, um, ungodly actually. To the ungodly, this statement will sound like a, a, um, license to leave anyhow. But it isn't, because it, it takes work eh, to have a pure heart. You think it is, I will not lie, I will not steal, sometimes your thoughts, they come and the Lord is saying, eh. Come, 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 let's have a conversation about it, this is not of me, ah, it's a protest, and then it's hard. You know. When he was talking about David and saying, you know, um, um, um. He will establish his kingdom forever, um, David is a man after his heart, yara, yara, yara. He, I don't mean that Lord is talking yara, yara, Lord have mercy, but you know, a lot of those things that he said about David. He wasn't referring to the David that slept with a married woman and killed her husband intentionally. I mean, if you think about the magnitude of that sin, ah, no, it shouldn't be David, it shouldn't be David, like David, you know, like. God should have ended this day and day, like, who is this guy, go, bye bye. I will slap my fingers and you are done, you know. But the testimony of the Lord regarding David at that time was not based on his foolishness. Because guess what, when the Lord confronted him with, you know, about his sin, there was a, there was a fast. Oh my goodness, much share, much share, much share, I need to repent immediately before perfect Nathan. You know, he admitted, I said, I have seen the case, I have seen greatly, stop, he started to go and repent. Like if I had been acting as maybe the Lord must have seen before, now that I can't survive and you are seeing me, God, you're my God, where would I run from, away from your presence? The one they posture. That David had in, in, had in his heart, that made him a friend of God. So the testimony of the Lord concerning the godly is not always, you know, is not, is never actually. The foolish decisions that we make in the time of our, um, um, weaknesses. The testimony is that even in those decisions eh, even after making them and, you know. Holding ourselves, we'll come back to the Lord and say, you know that there's no way, there's nobody else can help me except you, this anger. If I don't bring it to you, nobody else can help me, I will destroy, I will destroy myself. And they are willing to submit to him and say, Lord, I don't know how we want to do it though, but I'm ready to yield, help me work on it. Unforgiveness, he comes to the Lord and say. His heart, these people did A, B, C, and D, and E, you know, up to Z, his heart, but I cannot do it with my human mind, so help me. And that's one of the reasons why we're reading Psalms, so that we'll see the, the foolishness of David. Um, and also the wisdom of David and see his heart even in the midst of all of that. We'll see the strength of David, well, another Psalmist, because as we established, Psalms was not just written by David. Moses wrote, I don't know if Abraham wrote, um, but yeah, um, and, and the choir at that time. You know, but like we'll see how people, how to posture our hearts. How to keep our hearts pure, so that even when we make mistakes. There will be mistakes and not a moment of backsliding, do you understand? There's a difference between somebody who is journeying with the Lord and at some point, you know, falls, hits a block. And then the person falls, but there is a path before you and you're like, okay, I have, you know, wounded myself, I need to get up and. Allow the great precision and heal me, you know, excuse me, bind, bind this wound. And you continue on that path. There's a difference between that and somebody who has decided to enter a pit by themselves and just keep going down, 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 do you understand? The difference, in fact, Saul did not do half of the things, what, what did Saul do that the Lord was angry with him for? Someone said, let's go to this mountain, wait for me there, when I come, will I offer a sacrifice? Saul waited, he waited, seven days, wait for seven days, Saul waited for seven days. I hope it's seven and not three, if I use goodness though, to say the wrong thing, you know. And then I think on the eighth day, um, somehow Saul did not come. The normal person would have thought, I mean, this was, Saul did what anybody could have done, any godly person could have done, he offered the sacrifices. But it was like, okay, this man said, this prophet, I present seven days, seven days, you know, simply send me off and sacrifice myself. In our rational, Kenny, he didn't do anything wrong. And then Saul came and rebuked him and said, but I asked you to wait for me. Said, eh, but I waited, but you're not there now, so what was I supposed to do? As, you know, somewhere in his rebuke said some things, see, the, the, the difference between Saul and David was that. Even in the haste that Saul made, validly so, you know, to, to the canal mind. He wasn't quick to say, Saul could have just said, oh, okay. I'm not gonna say, eh, you will stick come, I was just, I didn't know what to do, and so I offered the sacrifice, you, you, you know, rather. Since I had waited, please forgive me, ask the Lord to forgive me, you know, just point yourself like that. But this was because the state of Saul's heart was not pure. Saul cared about his, his reputation, he cared about how the people saw him. Be bothered, somebody that came home and danced naked, who is your father? I am really sending you before my Lord, you know. So like when it comes to the Lord, David held sacred things, sacred, and that's one thing we need to learn. Like, I don't care, all of you can go and carry stone and say you will kill me today, but when it comes to my Lord. My posture is always on the floor, humbly. So Saul did not care about the verdict of the Lord, even Eli, you know, when, when somehow came and gave the prophecy to Eli. Eli, well, even Saul couldn't be bothered, like, whatever he does, he's the one that know. That's what they did, and so they're like, okay, it's me that, ah, wow, all right. No problem, um, I found a worthy person, oh yeah, give the crown, think we throw to David. So I'm saying that to buttress the fact that the testimony of the Lord over us has his, as his children, you know, is not based on where we are. It's not, it's not based on rather, it's not based on what we are doing, it's not based on the foolish decisions that we are making. But rather the posture of our heart, and if we continue to yield our hearts to him, continue to ask him. Because the Holy Spirit, let's not act as if the Holy Spirit only comes for oil and fire and power and falling down and breaking tables and that's the end. No, no. Let's not act as if, you know, this is living on the inside of us, but we can do anything, no. It is not just for show, the Holy Spirit also builds us, he makes us better believers. He, he's the one that builds the character of Christ in us. He's the spirit of truth, and so when we, when we stand before him, you know, as we behold him, as, as, as in the mirror. When we stand before him and we start to see the impurities of our heart, he's the one that says, you see that pride, we need to deal with it. All this people will not just touch, make you touch somebody and film, cancer is gone. He will do that because that is, that's one of his, um, um, duties. You know, as, as Allah's paracletus, in us and upon us, but he would also. Subject our spirit to clean. So that we can indeed live the good life. And then when we continue to fine tune our hearts, posture of our heart and the Lord comes to us and he sees that. Though we are broken, though we are, you know, inadequate in our capacity, though we are tired, though we are weary. Though we sometimes second guess ourselves, though we sometimes terrorize, though we sometimes please people. Though we sometimes look to, to, to the, to the wrong places for the definition of who we are. Though we sometimes look to the wrong places for the, for, for the show of the law that we need. Though we sometimes get our, our validation from people that are not, you know, have not been called over us. Though we sometimes make foolish decisions, stupid decisions, though sometimes we act like canal men. But even though all of those things are true, one thing is truer, that we have insulted righteousness in our heart above anything else. That we have exalted the Lord in our heart above anything else. That even though yesterday we did not pray, and before we did Bible study today, we did not open our Bibles. And when the Lord was saying, um, I need to raise an altar for me at so, so time, we did not remember to please today, even though that is true and wrong, you know. But he knows that when we come to him, we come. While honest with ourselves, honest with the Lord, because sometimes we come to Lord and we are fuming, so Lord, um. And we are just, and a lot of the judges are saying, oh, we're already, we're already, wah wah. And we, and we come, you know, without a, without any form of veil, without any form of form. Without any form of lie in our hearts, because we know that he sees us through our truth. And we have, you know, done something that we know that is not in line with the word of God, said something about someone or to someone. But we come to Lord and say, I know that you don't have said this, man, that I just said, but I was really angry, Lord, help me, help me to know how to apologize to this person. Help me to know how to repent from this sin, help me to know how to not do it again. That is a, that is a state of a heart that is pure, and that is where the Lord wants us to be. Because when we think of, you know, working before the Lord and being holy, we only think of it in deeds, but not in the posture of our hearts. And that's the difference between David and Saul and Eli. That's the difference between Abraham and Lot. The posture of our heart, that even, even though, even though we don't have the strength to carry on, we will lean on the Lord. We will lean on the Lord, even though we don't know what to pray for and we're supposed to keep praying, we will lean on the Lord. We will be truthful with the Lord, we will honor the Lord, there will be reverence in our hearts for him, there will be fear in our hearts for him. We will keep the things of the Lord sacred. And if you, as we continue to read, you know, the, the, the next Psalm, I really want us to, you know, finish, hopefully we finish to tomorrow. Um, I'm in, in prayer, if you come and you are very hungry, we may not be anxious, so it's good, actually. That would be not finished, it's the state of your hunger will determine what God will pour from, from, from my mouth, um, but yeah. You know, as, as we, as we journey into the Psalms, you will see how God was everything for, for, for David. You'll see how even in this evening, a falling state, and, and again, I just go back to Adam and Eve. If Adam had just said, okay, Papa, we have really, really messed up, we are so. Can, redeem us. I come back in the view that, you know, that cost that was, by the way. I feel like there's a lot of, there's a lot of by the ways, but you know, when you think of the cost that happened to Adam and Eve, it wasn't, it wasn't God punishing them for their sins. It was what their sins attracted, it's like you touch electricity and you get electrocuted, it's not that the energy is punishing you. That was what happened, that what happens rather, that's what happens, hey, Lord, that's what happens here when you touch naked where, literally. So God would just say, okay, now you are electrocuted, you know, so it wasn't in pronouncing costs, because. There were, there was, there were consequences to eating all that, of that fruit, of that tree rather. And God just made them know the consequences. Now that you're eating, it is what will happen, it's not, it wasn't, you know, angry and punishing, even though God does get angry. He does, but it's anyway, um. Yeah, I want us to just, to just pray, I want us to pray, this is really the moment where you want to be. Um, truthful, you know, real with God, um, um, plain before him. If you can, come off mute, um, that would really be great, um, but whatever it is, just make sure that you are praying, you know. And it's a prayer of surrender, because it, it takes, it takes a journey with God to be godly. Yes, it takes a journey with the Holy Spirit to be holy. We cannot achieve holiness by not lying, that's, that's not, we, we walk in the spirit so that we do not feel the loss of the flesh. We do not stop things of the flesh so that we can walk in the spirit, you know, even though that seems like the rational thing to do. But we walk in the spirit so that we do not fulfill the laws of the flesh, whatever those things are. Whatever those things are, I want us to just pray, pray, pray a surrender, and just say, Lord. Even as I have, you know, um, sat at your feet this evening, even as I have heard your mind. For me this evening, but I ask that you would help me, help me to always, always, always. Always be pure in my heart. Help me to preserve the purity of my heart, help me to preserve the purity of my heart. That I will not just, you know, serve people just because we have a God that's calling and I wanna show up. It will not just be that, but it will be that I'm excited to partner with my king, to see his kingdom come. That it will not just be that, oh, I don't want to, you know, shout at this person or insult this person, because I want them to know I'm a Christian. And I'm certainly using this seemingly good reasons, but it will be that, how shall I do this? There is this spirit of holiness in me, why would I insult a fellow human? That it will not just be that I can, you know, I have the intelligence, I have the brilliance, I can do all things on myself. But I will be coming to you every step of the way, as I make the decisions, as I, you know, think, the thoughts, as I. As I, you know, think the thoughts, as I write the texts, as I do the deeds. That the Lord will preserve the purity of our hearts, that when he comes to us. Every time in our journey with him, because it's a walk, it's a walk with the Lord, it's a, it's a journey. It's a journey, it's a journey, it's a journey, it's a journey that does not end with just falling down and standing up. And receiving and going and coming, you know, it's a journey, part time, part season, part phase. That even every step of the way, that the Lord, the Lord, the Lord will help us. He would help us, 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 he would help us. He would help us, he would help us, he would help us, because we cannot please him without faith. We cannot please him without faith, we cannot please him without faith. We cannot please him without faith, and faith is not just, you know, believing that God said one thing and then he would do it, that's a part to it. Faith is, fa- 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 faith is understanding the intent and the heart of Jesus. With every instruction, with every direction, faith is trusting in the Lord. And not leaning on our, on the things that we think we can do by ourselves. That in this journey, in this journey, that the Lord will set our hearts, the Lord will set our hearts. The Lord will set our hearts to be right with him, that the posture of our hearts daily, daily will be. Humbly to the Lord, humbly to the Lord, so that when the spirit of this world comes, they will find nothing of themselves in us. That our hearts will be pure, that the Lord will give us the grace to keep beholding him. To keep beholding him, to keep beholding him, that every nudge, every instruction, every voice. Every reminder, every teaching will be very solid in our hearts. And they will give us the grace to be, he will give us the grace to be. That at the time when we are weak, when we feel like there is no hope, when we feel like our flesh is really truly failing us. Because that's what he does best, that it would be that our solution would be to withdraw and isolate ourselves. But it would be to cry out to the Lord. That the Lord would indeed set us on a path, that all that we do, all that we say, all that we think. All that we imagine are the things that are related to the happy man. That the Lord will keep us from stumbling, he will keep us from stumbling, that even when we stumble. Even when we stumble, he will help us to get up. It would help us to get up. That the Lord will preserve us, he will preserve us, that he will make us brides that are ready, that are ready. Brides that are ready for the coming of our bridegroom. That the Lord will quicken his spirit in us, he will quicken his spirit in us. He will quicken his spirit in us to teach us our ways. We will not be foolish, we will not be foolish, we will not be foolish. The Lord has set a path of wisdom before us, we will walk in it, however painful it is. However, however painful the pudding is, we will walk in it, we will walk in it, we will walk in it. And we would allow ourselves be pruned. That we will not walk in the counsel of your godly. We will not stand in the ways of sinners, we will not sit in the seat of the scorpo. That the Lord will help us to keep our delight in his law. He will give us the enduring spirit to meditate day and night. It would help us to fall in love with him again. It would help us to fall in love with him again. He will revive his love in our hearts. Our love for the Lord will not grow cold, that our love for his work will not grow cold. That our love for his people will not grow cold, that we will not just do things for our brothers and sisters based on, well. That's what we're supposed to do, that if, if not, if not because I'm a Christian. That it will be that in spite of the wickedness of our brothers and sisters, we know and identify with the love of God. With the love of God, with the love of God, that is a mystery to the carnal mind. That would indeed be consumed with that love, and it will flow into everything that we do with everyone around us. That the Lord will help us, that the Lord will help us, that the Lord will help us. That the Lord will help us, that the Lord will help us, that the Lord will help us. It will help us to serve him, to praise him. We know that his spirit that lives in us makes intercessions for us. We know, we know, we know, we know. And so we allow ourselves to be quickened by that spirit, that the posture of our heart would always be God. At his ways, the posture of our heart will always be God first and God always. In the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus, for in Jesus' name we are prayed. Amen, amen. Thank you, Lord. Does anyone want to share anything before we round up, um, the session tonight? Do you know what to share anything that was on your heart, anything you learned, anything you think you should, you know, focus on again, even as we continue? Anything that you think you, that the spirit in, inspired or other, um, yeah, inspired in you and you want to share with someone. Um, on the call, please, please go ahead, you don't know who will listen. Anyone? Okay, okay, that was a no. Um, if, you know, as you continue, I mean, I really do not want us to, um. To, to, what's the word? I know that for some of us, um, T O T is like a, oh, let me go and hear from the Lord today. But I want us also to cultivate the habit of hearing from the Lord, even in your secret place, like, keep it alive. Indeed, let the word of God be your daily bread, let it be something that you eat daily, if not eating it for a day. Something is wrong with you, you know, kind of situation, let it be a daily thing for you, let it be a, a part, an hourly thing for you. Um, that's why I recommend you, you version Bible, I, I believe that the, is it you version or you Bible? The Bible that has you, why are you in it? Yeah, um. You know, so that we can also listen to the word of God, and by this, I don't mean sermons or like the actual scriptures. You know, listen to it, read it out loud sometimes if you can, um. Make, think about what you have read, you know, I mean, the, the meaning of meditation as we read in Psalm one. Conda, say it out loud, think about it again and again, say it again and again, read it again and again. Be quiet, listen again and again, you know, um, I, I really want us to cultivate that habit. Um, because it would not just be enough for us to meet twice every week, and that's the end, that's not the life, you know. Um, so fun to flames, um, let, pray that the Lord stares upon hunger, a hunger. Inside you that causes you to always want to hear his word and then take that hunger and fill it with his word. I promise you, the more you read the word of God, the hungrier you will get for the word of God. It's a, it's, it's, it's a mystery, you know, but it works, the more you read, the more you are hungry, the more you are engaged. So keep reading, um, tomorrow we start with Psalms two, I'm excited. Um, I don't even feel excited, but I'm excited, um, start with Psalms two and hopefully, you know. Okay, let me never say anything because a part of me is hoping we finish, a part of me is saying, no, we'll stay here. You know, but yeah, tomorrow we start with Psalms two, um, invite people. As, invite as many people as you can, if you know people in the community, please, I always remind them to join Bible study, um. Eh, the truth is, journey life cannot be the same as, um, watching the replay. Even though there is a blessing that comes with watching the replay if you are not able to join life. I know that, you know, seven P M, maybe you're at work or you need to be on the road, you can just plug, plug and play, re- really. But I don't miss those moments, the Lord has called us to, um, link his laws in this season and. His wisdom to give ourselves holy to that learning, because that's where profit is, you know. Um, so yeah, invite people to join us tomorrow, um, meditate on the words that you have heard today. And pray with them, and of course, come tomorrow, prepared. Come tomorrow hungry, um, I have a feeling that tomorrow I'll just call somebody to. To handle the session, but yeah, I really want to see us tomorrow. I'm sorry that we spent, you know, some extra minutes today, a lot more extra minutes today. Um, I just did not want to unyield to the. Um, to the need, you know, to, to the need of our spirit at the moment. So yeah, please forgive me, hopefully tomorrow we stick to eight thirty, you know, closing by eight thirty. Um, if you come early and engage early, you will most likely lead early, you know. But yeah, thank you very much, everyone, it has really been an incredible journey with us. God bless you, see you tomorrow bright, and, well, maybe not bright, but see you tomorrow early. God bless you, have a restful evening. Bye bye.
Good night.
Good night, good night. Good night, Timmy Lang.